Good evening, everybody. Thank you for coming to the Planning Board meeting. It's April 9th, just after 7:00 p.m. We'll call the meeting to order. The first item on the agenda is the reappointment of Tom Spataro to our Financial Planning Committee.
Thank you.
Have you enjoyed your time on the committee so far?
I have. It's been good. It's been interesting. I think it's three years already.
I know. You'd like to serve again?
Yes.
Let me see if any of the board members have specific questions for you.
Sure.
Okay. Anthony?
I don't have any specific questions. This is the first time. I've got a very impressive background, so I'm sure you're at the right place and you're a great asset for the board.
Carrie?
So I think I was one of the only people that hadn't met you, and everybody else couldn't say enough nice things about you or great things about you. So that's really great to know, and your resume looks fantastic, like a super relevant fit to this board. My questions are mostly about, you know, if there's anything you think throughout the year that would be beneficial for you to come in at some point, maybe halfway through or period. It seems like, looking at the agendas, you meet mostly January, February, March. Is that your typical? Or do you meet all year round?
It depends on how busy the year is. So if we have a busy year, we can actually start late November.
Oh, okay.
All the way through, which is not as much on the list, we'll start a little later.
Okay. So I'm actually new to the board this year, so I was looking maybe for your recommendation on is there a time where it would be beneficial to hear about what's going on in that committee from a Planning Board perspective? Or anything you can think of, maybe even? It would be great to know from my perspective, what the, from the decisions we make, does it have any impact on what you're doing? Or how can we, you know, work together?
I mean, I guess a couple of things. Either I can come to one of your meetings and give a summary of some of the things that are going on, or, you know, we go, in our meetings, we go through everything in depth.
Yep.
Some of the meetings will have a number of things that we're going to cover. So maybe talking to John Corder, he could probably recommend what the best meeting is to see the majority of items that are going to come up for that year.
Okay. So maybe just some sort of check-in point where we could hear just even a summary of what's going on there? And just out of curiosity, have you noticed, since you've been on three years, have you noticed any trends or anything interesting in your time on the committee? Or?
No. You know, honestly, I was, I mean, I run a very big organization.
Right, right.
And I'm amazed at the detail that everybody here pays attention to with the finances, how structured everything is. You know, it kind of makes our job a little easy, right? Because we're not coming in and trying to fix everything, you know? We're kind of coming in and going, okay, what can we do now? How can we address this? You know? What questions can we ask that maybe haven't been asked? So I've actually learned a lot.
Yeah.
Just being here, you know, you know, how does the town spend money? How do they plan long-term, short-term, things like that? So I think everything has just been good, better than I expected, probably.
Oh, very cool. And you're the clerk now, too. Are you the clerk of the committee?
Yes.
All right, so that must be interesting. Okay, great. Otherwise, I looked at your resume. It looks great, and I think that would be a nice addition if at some point that we have some sort of summary or check-in. Would that be something we could do or figure out?
Sure. The, I mean, we can figure out time-wise with that, whether we should have Tom here, or perhaps, you know, the Planning Board would want to attend a Financial Planning Committee meeting when, you know, if and when. You don't schedule public hearings, correct? It's through the Board of Selectmen on the whole budget as a whole. So with the Financial Planning Committee, primarily one of their, one of their main focuses is looking at the capital improvement plan.
Mm-hmm.
And it's something that all the, you know, all the departments have to follow. If you, you know, there's thresholds as far as projects of how much money that you can allocate into your everyday operating budget, which the Appropriations Committee reviews. And then for more long-range, sustainable projects, we go through a six-year capital improvement plan.
Mm-hmm.
And that's primarily what Tom's board focuses on, is that long-range planning and financial stability for the town.
Okay.
So they're not necessarily, I mean, the last time we had something, I mean, it's unusual for planning to have something on the capital plan, but the last time we did, it was for the master plan. Because again, it's that threshold that, you know, doesn't fit into the operating budget that we submit every year. And, you know, it's a, it's a, it's not a revolving fund, but I mean, it's a revolving cycle. I mean, we, you know, it's a six-year cycle, but we're on, you know, we propose something, the various departments propose something every year. So, you know, I mean, certainly, you know, the Town Administrator's Office prepares, you know, a summary of the work of the planning committee. We can have that available, and that'll be available at town meeting, too.
Okay.
You know, probably in the beginning of the budget cycle, maybe we can check back in.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thanks for coming in.
Tom, great resume, as always. So your committee is almost like advisory-like, design review is to, their committee is advisory-like to the Board of Selectmen as design review might be to the other boards that they're on.
Well, yeah, I mean, I guess you'd call it advisory, but I mean, it's a little more, has a little more beef than that.
Yeah. So I think what Carrie might be getting to is, you know, and I went to one of John's presentations at the Board of Selectmen's a couple of months ago, is if you start to see like a slowdown in building, or sometimes a zoning is impacting what's going on in town, people might not necessarily realize that would have an impact on like the bottom line as far as how the town could move forward. So I think some things like that, because I would find that interesting, like how does what comes out of land use impact the budgets and stuff like that? So I think those types of discussions would be interesting, you know, if you saw sort of a trend happening there. I think, is that your question?
Yes, yep.
You know, is there an impact coming out of land use, or building, you know, things start to slow down? How does that impact the bottom line with the town and how they can move forward with their budgets?
So is the town bigger and this will point its maturing?
Yeah.
Now we go with, how do we grow our funds from there?
Yeah. Yeah, and I think also you're probably going to be a great asset when the master plan comes out, because there's a lot of like, wish we could do this, but that means dollars, right? And can you do that? And there's a lot on that wish list that comes out of the master plan about can the town move forward with this and how can they, you know, do this from a financial standpoint?
Yeah.
And I think probably he would be somewhat of a go person, maybe even as we review the master plan, the Planning Board decides what to move forward with. I mean, you know, you'd be going back and forth with, you know, the financial planning about is it doable? Like, what if somebody wants to buy this building and it's just not doable? You know? I mean, when we sit in these manings with the master plan, it's like, how would you envision the town in 20 years? And, you know, if the resources aren't there, they aren't there.
Yeah. And John Corder does go over new buildings, vacant lands, what's happening with them, you know, for Snowboro Crossing and projects like that, but then other, you know, here's some open areas and here's kind of what's, you know, the long-term plans for them. So, but if that's some of the information that you're looking for as well, that he has it. I mean, I can update him.
Okay, great.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I just want to thank Tom, too, because at the last meeting Kathy said you've had 23 meetings and you've only missed one. So I commend you on that, because there's a lot of meetings, and I know you volunteer a lot for the town and other types of boards, so just wanted to thank you. And I just go along with Michelle and what she said, too, with the master plan, like, one thing that comes out is sidewalks, so that might be something that would go on the six-year plan. Or a couple of things. So that's, that's it, really, though. Thank you.
Anything from the town plan or something?
That's it.
Somebody want to make a motion?
Yeah.
Anthony, move.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
I move the board vote to reappoint Thomas Spataro to serve and the Planning Board's representative on the Financial Planning Committee for a three-year term to expire on April 30th, 2022.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Thank you. Thank you for your service so far and our service moving forward. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yep.
They get to have dinner.
You're free to go, if you wish.
Thanks, Tom.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tom.
Because it's a public hearing, you have to wait for two minutes?
No. Oh, oh, yeah, for that.
Yeah.
You want a minute? The?
Oh, yeah. We did, we received minutes for March 5th, the last time we were here. Any changes to those minutes by anyone?
The, I didn't print copies for everybody, because the changes were very minor. Actually, I think on March 5th was, I just had to insert a, who did a second?
Yeah.
On the, and then on March 19th, not that I'm rushing you, but then on March 19th, Teresa had a quick change, and Carrie had a quick change, that were really just grammatical changes that I made. Other than that, you know, I think everyone's all set with March 50 and March 19.
Okay. Anybody, anybody, sorry, anybody have anything else for March 5? Amy? No? Okay. Is there a motion to approve March 5 minutes as amended?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Okay. Anybody have anything else for March 19 minutes? Amy? Michelle? Oh, you weren't here March 19.
I wasn't here.
Anything on this end?
No.
No? Okay. Is there a motion to approve the March 19 minutes as amended?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? All right. So we will move to the continued public hearing for the 2019 proposed zoning amendments, and these will be the amendments that have been drafted by the board. Right? Yeah. So do you want to take, should we take these one at a time and then open it up for comments?
Sure, if you want. I mean, this is your continued public hearing. The only change I want to call people's attention to, which you don't have, but I'm going to tell you, the, the old, well, the handout that I've been using, it's dated February 15, and it's also available on the side if anyone's interested. But if you go to the, with page three, and Article 36, which I don't pay attention to those numbers, because those numbers have changed since I printed this, but the, in Town Council's review, as I've, you know, said to you all along, Town Council goes through the warrant. What's coming out, and it's, it will be printed in the warrant the corrected way, right in the middle of Article, what's now here is Article 36, there's the sentence, "There shall be not more than the following on each lot," bizarre English that I wrote. But anyways, that's coming out. That's, that's not needed in this paragraph.
Oh, that whole phrase?
Just the, yeah. There shall be not more than the following on each lot.
Okay.
That doesn't need to be there. So that is the only change since the last public hearing you held, which was on March 5th, you know, when you opened it. You know, if you want me to go through each one, I can, Teresa, or if you just want to ask questions, you know, however you want to do it, ask if anyone has any questions.
So why don't we, why don't we do it this way? Just, there might not be a reason to go through every single one. Does any, any of the board members have any specific questions or anything about any of the amendments that we've proposed? Anything on the side? Anything on the side?
No.
Carrie? No. Anybody here from the public tonight have any questions or comments about any of these specific zoning amendments that the Planning Board has proposed that are part of the handout? No. Nothing. There is nothing. Do you vote on?
I have a question.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah. My name's Tom Riordan, 7 Sunset Drive. I'm on the Design Review Committee. So I have a question about the Design Review zoning change. How will this be implemented? Because if you currently have three members and you have one missing?
I'm sorry, what do you mean, how will it be implemented?
So will the three members that are currently on Design Review become pre-existing non-conforming condition? Really?
Yeah. Okay. Actually, I think most of you conform, but okay.
Well, we're here, we're arrived on the board prior to this bylaw.
Right.
So are we in limbo, or?
Are you asking how are we going to implement the three years?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. I don't think.
Well, you all came on on staggered times. Like, you've been the longest, and then after you was, what should we call it? Diane is the most recent, and then Dave is in the middle. So Kathy is going to check with legal counsel, right?
Right. And I, I don't have an answer.
Right, an answer.
They're so busy with getting the meat of the warrant done, but they, they're going to answer that for, for the Planning Board, as far as how, how do you, you know, do you start with the, when you implement something like this, do you start with the, you know, board members coming on? I think that's how it's going to go, just similar to, you know, the Board of Selectmen just changed their policy, and so it's going forward, you know, and they just made, you know, several reappointments last night, and so all of those people followed the new reappointment policy that the Selectmen had adopted a couple of meetings ago. So I'm, I'm anticipating that that's what Town Council's going to say, so the, the new person that needs to, the position that needs to be filled on the board would be the first of the new three-year, you know, terms. But we'll have that clarification, you know, prior to town meeting.
Okay. So we're kind of like in limbo?
Um, yeah, yeah. I mean, I guess you could say that, but personally, I don't think that you are. I think that, you know, you're on the board, nothing has changed, and it'll be from, you know, this, this point in time moving on, you know, as reappointments, you know, where people come off the board and then new people want to come on the board, they would conform to this new bylaw.
So I could stay for another 20 years?
I believe so. We'll find out for sure from Town Council, but no, but I, I believe so.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments on the bylaws?
So we need first to close the public hearing and then vote on each?
The, sure. Like, as always, you can do one or two things. You can, you can vote while your public hearing is open if anyone has any questions. It doesn't seem like you have any more questions. The, I think by this time, you know, we beat the zoning to death at this point in the, in the calendar. But, but, so you could close it and then vote on each one of the articles. I have it on the agenda. I, I have it under Old New Business. You can pick it up anytime you want, as far as the voting, because you also have to vote on the citizen's petition, which again, you can do at the close of that hearing. You don't have to do it under Old New Business.
Okay.
But you, you know, the Planning Board, every, I write it every year, you know, we have to present a report to the town moderator, and then he reads that as part of, you know, when he does each article. You know, we also have to talk about who wants to do presentation on the articles.
Okay.
So I do have a question about the signs.
Oh, about the bylaw, sign bylaw.
I'm sorry, about the sign bylaw. So if, if there's something that Bob is looking into, a question related to electronic messaging centers, that his answer may depend on whether or not something changes in this, would it, how, I mean, this is our last chance of a hearing, so there's no, that we'd have to decide it now. Because I'm just wondering about the electronic projection in the center of town, if that is something we need to address in this bylaw, or how do, maybe that's just an amendment on the floor at town meeting, if need be? I don't know how that works.
I'm not sure I understand what you mean by electronic projection in the center of town. You refer to something specific?
Oh, yeah. So, yes. So one of the businesses just has a TV screen projected on the front window, and it's like an electronic sign, but it's not. It's a TV projection, and it's just not clear on how that fits in our current zoning.
Oh, I don't think I've seen that. Where is it?
It's new. It's right across from CVS. It's brand new. So I just don't know how that fits with this, if it's, and Bob hasn't been able to make a determination.
We don't know whether that's a sign?
We don't.
I'm not aware of this at all, so I don't.
Oh, okay.
I drove, and as I explained to some of the members before the meeting, I drove by it this morning and noticed it for the very first time, and I caught it in the corner of my eye, okay? I have not had a chance to look at it to see if it's okay, if it's not okay, what kind of sign is it? Is it a projection? Is it changeable message? I don't know what it is, okay? And until I research it, I can't make a determination whether it's okay to be there or not.
We don't allow signs from the inside of the building, do we?
Yes, you do.
We do.
You have a ton of them. You have honey farms, advertising.
Changeable sign, not the, not the drop, paper signs, but.
Yeah, an open, closed, a milk is a dollar ninety-nine.
The open, closed are allowed by right, non-commercial type signs. Like I said, I need to see what they're projecting.
Yeah.
I need to see how it functions, what it is. Again, I only caught it out of the corner of my eye this morning, and I was busy with other things today. I'm hoping I can get to it tomorrow or Friday, or by the end of the week, and make a determination, okay? And as I explained to some of the members of the board, that what you're looking at here is at town meeting. And if I look at the sign and I find that it's okay as it is, okay? And then the new sign bylaw comes into effect at town meeting, that particular sign is grandfathered.
Yeah.
Because you're, you're passing a regulation that restricts it after it's already been installed and approved.
Yeah.
Okay? Keeping in mind, I haven't approved anything yet, and I haven't denied anything yet, okay? I've got to research it and find out. It's a tech, from what I can briefly see, it's a technology I have never seen before. I don't know if it's a EMC that they've adopted for interior use. I, I don't know.
What I actually think it is, is a screen that's got, you know, white lights behind it.
Mm-hmm.
And maybe even like is fed through a flash drive on a message. I don't see the message. Do you see the message changing all the time?
Yeah, so what I, so what I saw today is there looks to be a projector from the ceiling that's pointed towards the window that faces the street. So I imagine there's some sort of opaqueness in the window that catches, but at night, it's, it's very bright.
Oh.
And so it is, so what they're playing.
What are you talking about? Who is it?
It's a new coffee shop. So like, they're playing sports channels on.
Last night.
Last night, they had baseball going, and it's got to be at least four-by-four image, and today, there was golf playing. But it's not nearly as bright during the day.
Yeah.
But that's not advertising. That's, that's flashing moving and animated signs, which are strictly prohibited.
Okay.
It's also from the inside of the building, which is what's causing me concern. Like, I know we can do things, like the paper signs that advertise the price of milk. That, that makes sense to me, but.
That's why I have to look at it.
Right.
It's, I don't know what it is.
Right.
I think everybody's advised.
Yeah, okay.
I'll go over and take a look, and I'll report back to you through Kathy, but it's, I can't make a determination sitting here right now.
Yeah.
Yeah. No, I just recently saw it as well.
I'm just curious. Does anyone know their Worcester shop? Because I know they have a Worcester shop.
It's on Shrewsbury Street. I haven't been in, I've only been by.
I was just curious if they had a similar, and we could, you know, talk to Worcester about what they classified it as or something, but.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know. I haven't noticed. I've been by a few times.
I thought it was a thin LED screen. I didn't realize that now as you got closer that it was actually maybe a projector projecting onto a screen.
That's what it appeared to be, to me.
And I didn't realize that it was, you know, you can't really stop and look, you're getting into a traffic accident, right? Because you're going pretty fast, right? So.
No, you shouldn't be going. You're not going fast.
Okay, I am only going 10 miles an hour, but still. You know? But you don't want to be distracted down there. So I did see it out of the corner like you did. Yeah.
Okay.
I'll look at it this week.
So are you?
I don't know what to do. Is it, are we, I mean, if it's grandfathered, so be it. I think maybe there are other things that cover it, but going forward, I'm not sure that's, that kind of defeats a little bit of what we're trying to do by the electronic messaging bylaw. So I don't know if it's something we need to address, or we feel it's covered for now until we figure out, figure out what it is.
Well, it's the same, if it's allowed, okay? It's the same situation as Moe's, as the Lions Club, as all the other ones we already have, okay? If you pass the sign bylaw at town meeting, okay, all the other signs are grandfathered.
Right.
Okay? It's the same situation. Yeah.
I just had a quick question. Can we leave the hearing open until town meeting? Like, I remember one year, we met like an hour before town meeting, and the hearing, I think, was still open.
You can do that. I already have a meeting right before town meeting, so I, I don't know that I would be able to attend your meeting, because I have another board meeting right before town meeting. But the, I haven't seen this sign, or I haven't noticed it, but it just shows you, you know, you go buy something six times a day and you don't, I don't see it. But, but, but this, but this specific sign, I mean, this specific bylaw.
It's your exterior.
That you proposed is a freestanding sign, which is an outdoor sign on, you know, some sort of pedestal with, you know, a height limit and, you know, width, and so I don't necessarily think, again, I haven't seen this sign, but I don't necessarily think it would be called a freestanding sign.
No.
So, so this bylaw that you're proposing is about freestanding signs.
Okay. All right.
It's definitely showing the red signs. It's not really advertising the store.
But who knows? It might, you know, maybe it might, yeah, maybe it would change. But, but again, I, I think, I mean, like Bob said, it sounds like, you know, he's going to look into it. But it, but it's not a freestanding sign. It doesn't fit under the scope of what you're talking about as this proposed bylaw.
Okay.
That answers your question, Carrie? Because this all, all refers to, you know, right, right in the, the beginning of the, of, you know, the, the very, beginning of the article that gets turned into the motion, is all about freestanding signs in the highway business and the industrial district. And, and that, you know, that's the downtown business district, and it's a, we don't know if it's a sign or not, but it's inside the store.
Interior.
And we're going to have to address that through the existing sign bylaw.
Well, freestanding is what we're adding, but in our definitions, it's any sign that utilizes computer-generated messages. Is it?
Right. So separately, you know, Bob's going to have, you know, will address that through, through the zoning bylaw.
Okay.
I don't know what that will be, but, you know, he'll, he'll take a look at it, you know, by the end of the week, and he's committed to doing that.
Okay, great.
But for the purposes of your hearing tonight.
We're talking.
For this article, yeah, it's a, it's a freestanding sign that this electronic message center would be for in the highway business and the industrial districts.
That makes sense.
Carrie, can you just repeat again what you just said?
Oh, it's just in, right here, the definition is electronic message center is any sign that utilizes computer-generated messages or some other electronic means of changing copy.
If that's not currently in this book, you can't apply.
Oh, no, I know.
This line to what's out there.
And then you go, and then it goes on to talk about what the, you know, further in the bylaw, what the illumination standards are for what.
Right.
An electronic message center is.
Got it.
So we're really talking, we're really talking about two different aspects of the sign bylaw. Yep.
But I think in our current bylaw, isn't it the case that all of our changeable copy is on a freestanding sign anyway?
Yes.
So we don't, we, we have to define what changeable copy and electronic message center are. Definition, by definition, it doesn't mean it can go anywhere. We still have to say where that could specifically go. Currently, it can only go on a freestanding sign, and that's still going to be the case. Not an interior sign.
Correct.
Okay. Okay. So with that, is the board comfortable taking a vote on the various articles this evening? Okay. Anyone want to make a motion?
Do you have to lead each one?
We'll take one at a time.
If you, the, actually, I just corrected all my articles, so if you, if you just want to do motions, you know, Elaine has, will have this to, this handout to use it as part of her minutes. So the first article, which says 31, and what you're looking at is really Article 28, so if you want to make a motion about approving 28.
Do I make a motion?
I think we did these last time, because I remember making this motion already once before.
No, you continue the hearing.
I know, but I remember I was voting on it. So, but I'll do it again. I'll make a motion that we approve Article 28 to see if the town will vote to amend Part 7 of the Northborough Town Code, the Northborough zoning bylaw, Section 703040, special permit C criteria, by deleting the text shown in strike-through and adding the text shown underlined, or take any action thereto.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
And then Teresa, as you're talking about each one of the articles, do you want to talk about, does anyone want to do the presentation on the articles?
Sure. Amy, you want to do this, since it was your suggestion?
I don't know.
It's your amendment.
I know.
Who knows it better than you?
I know, but, um, I don't know. I like it better when other people do it.
You steer on camera every, every other Tuesday practically.
I know, but not standing at the front. I don't know.
I mean, you know.
Kathy's done it before for us.
Clearly, if you don't, you know, if, if you don't want to do them, of course, I'll do them. But, but, you know, I always like to give someone the opportunity, all of you, the opportunity.
I'm up there.
To do the articles.
You can do it.
But someone does need to, on each one of the articles, someone does need to read the motion. I can't read the motion, because I'm not hesitant.
Okay.
So at a minimum, someone needs to read the motion.
Amy, you want to read it?
I could read the motion, I think.
If I faint, you'll have to pick me out.
Oh, my goodness, really?
You'll be fine.
I'm not one to stand in front of crowds.
Okay.
Okay, so you're all, did you vote?
So, to read the motion, would I just read exactly what's written here?
We'll have the motion printed out.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then you have to sign it, whoever's reading the motion, you'll read it, sign it, you can sign it ahead of time. But, you know, you read it, you sign it, and you hand it to one of the board of selectmen members seated, seated behind you, and then they hand it to the town moderator. And that's just what the process is.
We can do a dry run.
And then after you read the article.
I think we're gonna have to.
After you read the motion, um, you know, I'll just do a brief presentation. If nobody else wants to do a presentation.
Would this one be a housekeeping kind of?
Um, yeah. That's how I would work.
Okay. What's the article number for the next one?
Um, Article 29.
Do we have a motion to approve this one?
And you can, you don't have to read the whole thing.
So just a motion to approve Article 29?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve Article 29. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Okay. I think this was, Carrie, I think this was yours.
Sure, I'll read it.
Do you want to present it?
Sure.
Okay.
Okay, so Carrie, you're gonna do the motion and the presentation?
Sure. Excellent. Is the next one 30?
Yes. And that is the, um, you know, holiday, um, horticulture.
Oh, okay. Is there a motion to approve Article 30? I make a motion to approve Article 30. Second?
Second.
All in favor? We'll delegate Teresa for this.
There's a chance I'm traveling.
But you brought this to town meeting.
No, I didn't.
The chair was supposed to do all of them.
I didn't, I actually didn't present any articles this year.
Okay.
Um.
Carrie, you can sit down, you gotta take on this one.
This is an article that came from staff.
Yeah.
Okay.
But again, somebody needs to, um, um, make the motion. And the reason why I'm asking you tonight is because we prepare, uh, you know, within the next week or sooner, um, we prepare a, uh, you know, a spreadsheet, um, with all the motions.
Carrie, you want to read the motions since you'll be up?
For this one?
Yeah.
Do I have to try to say horticultural at the meeting? You just did. All right, thank you.
Holiday horticultur.
Oh, no, it's alliteration.
All right, so Carrie? Anyone want to do the presentation?
It's a staff bylaw, I think that Fred should do it.
Different staff.
So Bob or I will do it.
Okay. Um, the next one will be 31. Is there a motion to approve 31? I make a motion to approve Article number 31. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Okay.
Who wants to do the motion for that?
I'll do the motion, cause I'll stay up there if I'm gonna do the first one.
Okay.
I'll stay up there with Carrie. I'll do the motion, but I really don't want to do the presentation.
All right, Bob or I will do that, we'll, um, and then Article 32.
32, is there a motion to approve 32? Make an arti- oh, make a, make a motion to approve Article 32. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Amy, do you say you want to read this one too?
Not really.
Okay.
This is brave, I'm out of my comfort zone with two.
This one is?
Michelle could come up and join us.
All right, I'll do this one. This is one of, this is one of your amendments, see. Oh, this is yours too. This is your, this is your.
Maybe Anthony. I, two is my limit.
Anthony's, Anthony has the signs. I think he's the owner of the sign. All right, so Michelle, you want to do this one? Michelle will read the motion. Do you want to present it?
Um, yeah, I don't mind presenting that one.
This is one you're kind of against.
Maybe it'll get voted down.
Okay, Article 33. Is there a motion to approve Article 33?
Oh, I'm, go ahead, Anthony, this is yours.
I make a motion to approve Article 33.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Okay, Anthony, you want to read the motion and present?
Sure.
And present?
Sure.
Well done. Is that it? Okay.
Um, okay, and then you just, you would need to, um, close the, if you didn't already, I'm sorry, you might have.
We haven't yet. No, no, we took your advice and didn't.
My, I think I missed on my numbers.
Oh, Amy's back in.
I just wanted to do nonconforming, I didn't want to do the sign one.
The nonconforming is, um, 32, which is the one.
I was off by number three.
Okay. So you can take the nonconforming, you can stay up there after you do the, um.
I don't want to do the, um.
The horticultural.
The horticulture, I don't want to do that one.
Okay.
I just wanted to do the, um, special permit and the nonconforming.
Okay, so we'll switch Amy, is it?
Do you mind if I do this for you?
Go right. Okay. So we'll switch Amy around to nonconforming since that's her. And Carrie, how about staying up there and doing two horticultural?
You've said it once, you'd say it first. I will have anxiety all day over that. You can get together with Amy in practice.
Yeah. Listen, I presented, I presented the medical marijuana bylaw and all the marijuana bylaws, and that was.
So Amy, you're gonna do the presentation for 32?
No. I'm just gonna read the motion this year, maybe, maybe next year.
Okay.
Okay, so Carrie, I just want to double check this. So on Article 29 and 30, and 31, Carrie's. Carrie's gonna do all those and the presentation?
Except you're doing the presentation on the holiday trees.
On 30, on 31?
On 30. Or was it 30 or 31?
Oh, 30 is the trees. Oh, so I'm gonna do the presentation on that?
30 and 31, I think, oh, hands.
Yeah, they're so.
Okay. All right, and then 30, 28 and 32 is Amy. And I'll do those presentation, and then 33 is Anthony for the motion and the presentation. Okay.
You're gonna have a hard time not laughing, it's gonna be bad.
Okay. Do we have the text of the proposed citizens petitions somewhere?
Um, yeah, well, yes, what, so what you have in front of you.
Oh, yes, sorry, is there a motion to close the public hearing for the, um, the continued public hearing for the 2019 proposed zoning amendments?
I make a motion to close a public hearing for the 2019 proposed zoning amendments.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Okay.
So the, the next, um, hearing, um, and actually, if you, if you just want to leave the hearing, now this.
I do.
Yeah, and then just give that back to you at night.
All right, so we're gonna open the public hearing regarding the citizens petition for 2019 proposed zoning amendments. And this is the public hearing notice, Northborough Planning Board. In accordance with MGL Chapter 48, Section 5, the Northborough Planning Board will hold a public hearing on April 9, 2019 at 7:30 PM in the Northborough Town Hall, 63 Main Street, Northborough, Massachusetts, for the purpose of seeking public opinion on proposed amendments to the following sections of the Northborough zoning bylaw, Chapter 7. The complete text of the proposed amendments is available at the Planning Department Town Clerk's Office and at www.town.northborough MA.us. Section 7 dash 050, I'm sorry, Section 7 dash 05 dash 030, Table of Uses, Table 1, Part A, by adding two family dwelling is prohibited use in the RC zoning district. Section 7 dash 05 dash 030, Table of Uses, Part, uh, Table 1, Part A, Two Family Dwelling, by deleting reference to RC from footnote 3 and adding a new sentence to footnote 3 to read as, quote, "Notwithstanding the provisions of Section 7 dash 03 dash 030 or any other provision of this zoning bylaw, no use variance for a two-family dwelling shall be permitted in the RA, RB, and RC districts," end quote. Section 7 dash 03 dash 060, Design Review, comma, amend B sub E by deleting reference to RC. Section 7 dash 06, Density and Dimensional Regulations, Table 2, delete RC from Table 2 and delete footnote 1. Section 7 dash 06 dash 030, J5, by deleting reference to RC. Teresa Capobianco, Chairman, March 26, 2019, and April 2, 2019.
So the, um, I had originally emailed the petition to everybody and, um, and I, I, so I, I only have a, um, I mean, I can. I can give you a copy, um, just out of, out of what I have here. If people, um, didn't have it from their emails. But, um, and I also have, um, one of the warrants, uh, the, you know, for town meeting if someone wants to follow along with this.
Yeah.
Um, but the petitioner, um, is not here this evening, but submitted a letter that you all have a copy of. And, um, that she requested be read into the minutes.
Okay, so I'll read that. It's dated April 8, 2019, addressed to Teresa Capobianco, Chairman, Planning Board, Town in Northborough, 63 Main Street, Northborough, Massachusetts, 01532. Dear Chairman Capobianco and members of the planning board, I will not be able to attend the public hearing on April 9th due to a family health emergency. However, I wanted to share additional information with you as to why I have filed a citizens petition to remove two-family dwellings from residential C parentheses RC. Two-family dwellings by special permit were removed from RA and RB in the 2009 zoning bylaws. They were not removed from RC despite RA and RB having significantly larger lots. This is very curious, and I would hope that by next year's town meeting that GR, MSR, and DN be removed and replaced with RA since that is the largest area of buildable land. Makes more sense to me. Over time, as land became more difficult to find and more expensive to buy, a worrisome trend emerged. Developers began to tear down houses to build duplexes or build duplexes on ridiculously smaller lots in order to maximize profit. Many residents took notice and protested these developments in their neighborhoods. As part of that protest, voters approved an article calling for a one-year moratorium on the development of two-family dwellings. That article was filed in response to a sharp increase in such dwellings being built on properties formerly occupied by single-family homes approximately 1,000 square feet in size. After the en masse zoning debacle, it was my understanding that the planning board was tasked with developing appropriate bylaws. Although in 2018, an amendment was passed that increased the required lot size and frontage in RC, it was not enough. This bylaw still does not fully achieve what residents have been asking for over the course of several years now. Time and time again, residents have voiced disapproval of two-family dwelling duplexes being built in their neighborhood. I have filed this petition for the following reasons. Duplexes are being squeezed into small plots of land in awkward and dangerous locations, i.e. driveways of two duplexes on the dangerous curve of South Street is a hazard. Character of neighborhood parentheses, duplexes are much larger with no max height or size restrictions to the homes nearest to them. Reduction to eliminate, reduction to elimination of green space. Impact multifamily homes can have on our schools. These two-family duplexes are not affordable, see selling prices on attached page. If two-family dwelling duplexes aren't affordable and serving a need, and the residents have continually voiced a negative response, it's time that we address this matter and put the proper zoning in place to remove two-family dwellings from RC. Hope that you will review the additional information below and support this petition. Sincerely, Lisa Misselli, 13 Maple Street. Then there's an attachment, it says two-family dwellings built 2016 to current, and there's a list of the two-family dwellings. Should I read all of these? Yeah. Okay. Okay. I don't know where to start since we don't have anyone presenting.
Um, well, I would, um, what I would propose the planning board do, um, again, since it's a public hearing, is, you know, if you have, um, you know, questions or, or concerns, staff has concerns about this and, and will, you know, provide those to you as we go through the public hearing process, but, um.
Well, let me, let me actually, now that I think of it, let me start this way. Are there any members of the public here that assisted in the development of these, um, proposed bylaw amendments? That wants to speak to them? No. Okay. Sorry, go ahead.
Nope, that's okay. So I would, um, I mean, it's a little difficult without having the, the petitioner here for you to ask questions, but, um, you know, if you, if you have questions, we can reflect those in the minutes. You would need to, you know, eventually you, the same thing as you do on your own zoning amendments, you need to, um, uh, you know, take a vote tonight so that you can make a recommendation at town meeting on this particular article.
So why don't we go through the, um, concerns of the town, the planning office, the planning department, and then we'll see what the board members have to say, and then we'll take it from there.
Okay. Um, well, two things. I have, um, I just, I have some general comments that I'd like to make to, to everybody. And then you also have in front of you a letter that Bob, um, Federico put together, our building inspector, and, um, that was provided to you tonight. And, um, and Bob can speak to that. The, um, just, uh, some, some general comments that I have, um, is that, that I'm, I'm not sure, I, I don't agree with a lot of the statements that are made in this, in this letter. I don't know what, um, and this is just from a planning perspective on, on how I believe that zoning articles should be brought forward at town meeting. Although it's completely legitimate, you know, to, to go through citizen, you know, have a citizens petition. But, um, you know, there's a, there's a couple of statements about an en masse zoning debacle. I have no idea what that means or what that's referring to. The, um, you know, the, the statement about the change being made to RC, I mean, the planning board spent almost two years coming up with that change and enlisted a consultant, um, a consultant's assistant to help with that. So that, you know, was not something that was just, um, you know, quickly thought of on the fly. Um, I mean, it was something that the planning board went through, like I said, almost two years, um, which included a one-year moratorium that you put on duplex construction in town. Um, and then it goes on to talk about, you know, the, the reverse of what you had all proposed and supported about, um, putting duplexes now in the RA district and the RB district, when in fact, you know, that was, that went through a very, you know, comprehensive zoning committee review process about, um, removing that, removing duplexes from the RA and the RB. And we had, as staff, we had done a calculation for you about how many duplexes exist in RA and RB. It, like, like period in, in the entire town. Um, and then, um, how many duplexes had been proposed over a 10-year period in the RA and the RB? And that was zero. I don't have all the numbers from, um, you know, two years ago when we started all of this, but I just wanted to point out a couple of concerns I have with, if, if this is to be the, the, um, you know, the, the, the facts as this petitioner sees going forward to town meeting. And then I also just want to point out, and I'm continually pointing this out, is that you're in the middle of a master plan process, um, which is a very comprehensive consensus building process. And there is, um, you know, one of the nine chapters of the master plan is all about housing. And there has been, um, you know, a lot of work spent by the master plan steering committee on the housing chapter with all sorts of recommendations about, you know, housing, providing housing options in this town. And, and not necessarily that duplexes are the only answer or the only solution, but it's never been about, we talk about affordability now with a small A and a capital A. So when we talk about, or when people make references to duplexes being affordable, that is not terminology that I have used in the sense that it does not go to the subsidized housing inventory. It's not made available to, um, you know, other housing options in town are not made available to people of, um, you know, specific income levels that the state has, has determined to be what's called, um, uh, you know, a true affordable housing. So, so having duplexes and multifamily and townhouses in your zoning bylaw, it's about housing options. It's not about whether something's affordable or not affordable. But what you see is, um, and by virtue of, of some of the, the statistics that I had the assessor double check for, for you tonight, is the, um, the petitioner put together a list of preferences of, of homes, you know, over the last three to four years in town. And the majority. And the majority of what she presented are duplexes. A couple of these are, are single-family homes, but I think they just got mixed in here in the list. But, so what you're seeing are, are, you know, is a price point that's different than a single-family house. And again, I'm not here to argue whether something is affordable or not, but when you're in the middle of a master plan and part of that master plan is addressing housing and how this town should move forward with housing options and, and, and what is it that you want to tackle as a community for housing options. I just don't think making changes to, to your existing bylaws is something that you should be doing in the middle of the master plan. I think that you, as a, as a board, would want to wait until the master plan is over and then we move into the implementation phase of the master plan and do pretty much what we did last time with the community development plan, plan, you know, we put together a zoning subcommittee and, you know, you know, and again, we go through, we go through a very thorough process of going through the bylaw and not just addressing, you know, just duplexes or, you know, housing, but you're, you're, you know, looking, you know, whole scale with the, at the full zoning bylaw. So again, it's just the, I just can't stress enough that when, when any community is in the middle of a master plan process, which is all about deciding, you know, where, where you want the future of this community to be, you need to wait for that master plan to be completed and then again, move into the implementation phase. So those, those are my initial comments. And then, like I said, Bob put together a letter for you.
Bob, do you want to review?
Yeah, but first I want to talk about this first, which is the two-family duplex dwellings. I'm not going to worry about the accuracy of the sale prices of the square footage of the properties, okay? But when she compares these to homes on Northgate at 425, most of the homes on Northgate are about 1,100 or 1,200 square feet, okay? And these square footages of these other properties that were sold are darn near double the square footage of anything in Northgate. So I would be suspicious about, you know, using these as a direct comparator to anything going on there because these condos are twice the size. Okay? So while I understand where she's going with this, I don't think this is accurate. Number two, on the letter I wrote, did you all get a copy?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
These are just thoughts that I had about, you know, the proposed taking the duplexes out of the YRC zoning district. And basically it says, if this passes, the only allowable zones in town for duplexes would be general residential, Main Street residential, and downtown neighborhood. What I did was I took a look at all of those three quote eligible zones in town, and there are probably three parcels that would qualify for duplex in what, in what it would be allowed. And also, if you look at the districts where it would be allowed anyway in those three zones, very few of the lots have frontage or area and they're all built up. So what happens, as duplexes can be a less expensive option, okay? The, my, my fear is that this becomes exclusionary zoning, okay? Which means you're excluding people the ability to have a more affordable housing option here in town. It is almost economic segregation. And I just want to make you aware of that because that's a big issue coming up. Because what's happening is the governor, as you probably know, has announced a directive and it's going to go through the legislative process again this year to come up by 2025, 135,000 more units of housing across the state. Okay? It will also, if this back passes at the State House, it will also reduce the third, two-thirds majority vote requirement at the town meeting to simple majority. Okay? And this particular measure has the backing of a kind of a weird relationship of groups because it's realtors, housing officials, contractors, the Mass Municipal Association, and, and it's, you know, it's kind of a weird group, okay, to, to support something like this. So what you've got is the, theoretically, you know, you're blocking out people the ability to have a more affordable housing choice, okay? Economic segregation is a very real possibility here. And, you know, you're, you're, they're proposing to do this in the face of a directive by the governor and it's, and it's probably going to be substantiated by the legislature. So I'm just saying that, you know, make whatever decisions you want, but this is something I think needs a lot of attention paid for. That's all I have.
Thank you. Fred, do you have anything you have? Okay. Michelle, any thoughts on this?
No.
Amy?
My main thoughts of this are, I was on the other side of this desk once and I came before the board and I had something that I wanted to propose and the board said to me, bring it to town meeting. And I feel as a representative that was voted on by the public that it should go to town meeting. I'm not saying which way I stand on it, I'm just saying they deserve the right to have their citizen petition heard. And the person said to me, bring it to town meeting and let town meeting decide. So I think that's what I would say because someone said it to me and it made sense. Like, it's not my petition and, and I'm not sure, but I've just, you know, I'd like to give her the opportunity to bring it to town meeting and let them decide.
It goes to town meeting.
Yeah, I mean, there's no, there's no question that, that it's going to town meeting and, and I think as Bob and I both have said, I mean, the, you know, there, there is a, you know, this went through the legitimate citizen's petition process. I, I just oftentimes wish that they, that people worked through the Planning Board instead of, even though they can legitimately do a citizen's petition, but again, when it particularly comes to zoning, zoning is very complicated. And, and I think as you've all found, especially the newer board members, that it's, it's so intertwined and it's, it's just not zoning. You know, again, this is so intertwined in with, with the master plan and the, you know, the recommendations that, that haven't even come out yet from the master plan, but we just, we just announced, and I'll, I'll announce it again tonight, we talked about it at the Selectments Meeting last night, but, you know, the third survey is out for the master plan and it's all about the recommendations and there's a whole helping section, you know, part of the survey. So I just, I just think, again, that it is premature. It's going to town meeting, there's no question about it. You're having this public hearing tonight and you all have to make your recommendation tonight. So you can't escape that. You all have to make your recommendation on this article tonight.
Okay. Just one last thing I wanted to say about the exclusionary zoning because I did do a lot of research for the master plan on housing and I printed out from 2017, how many towns, say there, I think there were 351 towns, and I didn't bring the paperwork with me, but there were certain towns that have hit their 10% to get over their 40B. We're at 12%, but I would say out of the 351 towns, only 50 towns have gone over 10%. So to say Northborough is being, I forget what you said, economically, economic segregation, I would hope the state would go to some of these towns that are at 3%, 4%, 5% and say, when are you going to do your part? Because I feel like Northborough's always, thank goodness, has been over there 10%. And as far as tearing down the small houses and building up the duplexes, there are people who have come to me and said, I bought a Cape on South Street for $200,000. If someone had come in and torn that down and done two duplexes for $500,000 on each side, I never would have been able to afford to come to Northborough. So that was the way the person said it to me, not this person, just in my process of the master plan. And I'm not saying it's me, this is just what somebody said to me. So I just wanted to let you know their side. But I also don't think Northborough is economically segregating out anyone because from the research I've done, we're way ahead of all these other towns. And I think Northborough does a great job. We have that affordable housing, we have Brooklea, we've done a lot. And I think we're leaps and bounds ahead of a lot of other towns.
Go outside.
Yeah, I'm going to wait till you.
Okay. Carrie?
Yes, okay. So I guess when I look at this, this sheet, and I see the comparison, I actually view, I read it differently. I view it as, it's almost the point of what is being made here, that we have these smaller little homes and then you have, if there's a giant duplex thrown in, then the consistency there is, you know, rather than, like, I guess what you're saying a little bit, Amy, rather than be able to buy something for 425, now you have a duplex of, I don't see any in a similar street, but say just the top one, 493 for a duplex. That's not affordable to me. So I, or, or I know you talked about big A and small A, but I'd want to know what need are two families serving? If not affordability for the starter families or elderly at 520, 560, 530, whatever they are here, if not serving that need, what need are they serving, I guess?
Well, it's serving the needs of the people who can't afford a new house at $840,000.
But they can get, so what I'm reading is they can get a single-family in Northgate for 425 or they can get a duplex for 525. The newest for sale is listed at 525.
So they have a series of options to choose from depending on their budget.
Well, I don't think a starter family or someone, an elderly person is going to spend 525. I don't know. That's just how I view it and how I read it. That it's not necessarily, what need is it serving when I see this list? And just looking at these reasons, you know, that's South Street. I remember the residents complaining about that. Now, I wasn't sitting in this seat, but on the other side of it, I remember the people around South Street really upset about that, that they were getting squeezed into that land, it was dangerous, it was on the curve, it had those driveways there. I actually remember this example in here. So that's interesting to me that that was pointed out and that these things are, again, what need is it serving, I guess is my question.
Well, I think every town is in need for housing.
Of course.
Of all different styles and types, et cetera. And the, for me, the issue with Northgate is it's, it's a very, it's a highly sought-after neighborhood. The Northgate area is. It presents good opportunities for people with kids who want their kids in the practice school versus one of the other schools. You know, it's, it's a good way to start out in the town. The, the idea that those houses are only slightly less expensive than a new duplex with the garage, you know, that's got all upgrades, all, everything practically brand new, tells me that people are going to pay an extraordinary amount of money for something that is decades old when they could pay a tiny bit more for something that's brand new. You know, it, so the price differential here is not hundreds of thousands of dollars, which is what it is right now with all the new single-family homes coming in. All the new single-family homes coming in, I haven't seen one for under six or seven.
Yeah.
And, and so it does, the duplexes do actually serve a need for people who can't do the 600 or 700,000 but have four kids, so can't go into Northgate because there's not enough bedrooms.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Can I just add to that? I think to Bob, so what you're saying is, is a lack of, actually, new construction's not as high as 800s, more in the seven price range, but what you're basically saying is that you're not getting, there's an element of the population in the 500s that can't get the new construction. I think what we struggled with as a board and I think continue to struggle with is what you saw on that Hudson Street property where you took a pre-existing house, guttered the inside and made it like new construction. I think that's happening all across the state, which is, when do you tear or when do you remodel? So that's a struggle back and forth. I mean, I almost feel like the same way with Amy. There's five of us have talked it all out as well as with staff. You almost want to hear from the community, what are you actually thinking? But I understand, like, if you're only going to do new construction, this is the one price point and it's going to be this high, until we start to discuss what came out of the master zone, which is maybe some of those cottage-style homes or stuff like that that are smaller. Unfortunately, the styles that we're seeing built now have an impact on what people are making their decision.
Right. And, and on top of that, I don't, you know, last town meeting, the new dimensional regulations were passed for duplexes and it was approved by town meeting, obviously. And I don't know of a builder anywhere that's going to take those measurements and not try to make it almost out to the limit of those measurements. There's no builder out there that's going to say, I'm going to make it smaller to keep everybody happy. He's going to build it to the size that he can and maximize his investment. Okay? So don't think for a second that somebody's going to want to put up a duplex and make a pair of them that are 1,200 square feet. I just don't see it. You know, I don't see it coming across my desk in terms of the size of any of the duplexes or any of the single-family homes or anything like that. You know, you've got a, there's many houses here in town. It was a small lot with a small house, the house comes down and the single-family goes up. Okay? And again, the houses may not be 830, but they're certainly high sevens.
Right. Anthony?
Well, so, anybody correct me if I'm misunderstanding anything here, but, so if it is, if RC only has three lots that could be utilized for duplexes?
No, 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 no. The remaining allowable sections only have three lots that would qualify for a duplex. I don't know the current zoning laws.
So, so Bob's referring to the, what's, what the petitioner is proposing is that they would, although she's looking to do something next year at town meeting, by deleting them in general residential, Main Street residential and downtown neighborhood. So Bob's saying in those three zoning districts today, the calculation that he did is that there's only three lots that meet the requirements.
Okay, so where it would be allowable.
For duplex to be, yeah.
Do we have any sense of how many would be, potential lots in, in RC would be, could put up a new duplex?
What, what we couldn't do last year was, and it, it's all because of how, when you try, when you, when you do, I can't think of what the technical term is, but basically when, when I talked to the GIS department about putting in the, the regulations that were adopted last year, is that we can't, we can't just insert those into a, you know, into a formula to say, okay, you know, in the residential C district, which the computer reads as a, you know, 100 feet and 20,000 square feet of frontage, which is what the majority of the lots are, you know, I mean, they're very rarely are they oversized. So we, we could not create a formula that would then take the new dimensions because it's just not how, it has to do with like polygons and.
Right. Also, there, I mean, I would guess, I would guess there's not.
So we could not come up with a number.
I would guess there's not many lots in RC that you could utilize for, I'm guessing, just even looking at the map, looks pretty condensed. And this is, so question I don't, this is a question. If you were, say, in Northgate and you wanted, or were a builder, anybody who wanted to take and buy two adjacent homes and tear them down and combine that lot, could you do that?
You could, but you'd only get one duplex out of it now with the changes that were adopted at last year's town meeting.
I think you'd get, I don't think you'd get one.
So you, no.
30,000 square feet.
Yeah, that's true. And all of Northgate is a non-conforming area of town because it doesn't even meet present zoning. That's true.
Matter of fact.
They're not 20,000 square foot.
To back you up on, on that, if you look in the non-conforming section of the zoning code, it talks about residential non-conforming, and there's seven or eight items that are listed that allows certain things to be done in certain districts. And 99% of that, that list of conditions is designed for Northgate. Okay? Because if by chance the work on Northgate, we didn't have those available, I don't want to call them loopholes, but those available.
Exceptions?
Virtually every building permit in Northgate would be coming in front of the ZBA. Every one of them. Okay? I mean, we still get a fair amount because of groundwater and getting into setbacks for, for the yard dimensions. But, you know, it's, it's very small lots, very small homes, starter homes, whatever you want to call them. But it's, yeah, it would be difficult to get anything bigger in there.
You know, my, my biggest takeaway, and I'll get off my soapbox after I say it one more time, and I'm sure there's people here that want to chime in on this, but the, I just don't, I mean, I even. And I'm sure there's people here that wanna chime in on this, but the, I, I just don't, I mean, I even struggled with, with all of you, you know, making the zoning bylaw changes that you're bringing to town meeting this year because I just, it just goes against everything in me that you don't make zoning changes while you're in the middle of a master plan. You just wait until that process, that again, is this comprehensive consensus, transparent, you know, community-building process. You just, you wait till that's done and then, and how you implement that. And that's where your zoning changes come from. And those zoning changes could very well be, you know, what you wanna do with duplexes, again, townhouses. Michelle mentioned cottage. You know, we have one zoning district now where we have cottage dwelling, cottage dwellings allowed. You know, perhaps we look at, you know, expanding that, you know, so that you have more of like the Deville Farm type of developments. But, you know, my message is, is that you shouldn't be doing zoning changes in the middle of a master plan.
So then can I just ask, so it's really, but again, no matter what any of us, any of what we think, it's still gonna go to town meeting.
Oh, absolutely.
So.
Right. You need to make your recommendation, you know.
Oh, is it, okay, so.
Yeah, you do have to do that, just like you did on the last, you know, six articles. You need, you need to make a recommendation on this.
You good?
I'm good.
And Ms. Carrie?
Just a question in terms of what was passed last year. With the two-family design guidelines, where do those stand exactly a year out from the last vote?
Well, what we did because of this citizen's petition is we put it off. I mean, slightly by like two weeks. Because the Design Review Committee was going to meet last Friday, the Friday before, Michelle.
Yep.
And, and now we're going to be meeting on May 3rd, if that's the first Friday. And so the final draft will be coming to the Design Review Committee by the end of this week.
Okay.
So those, so those, I mean, those guidelines still need to be adopted by the Design Review Committee because you still, you know, whether this citizen's petition passes or not, say if it does pass, there's still duplexes, you know, allowed in these other zoning districts. The, you know, Bob points out, the likelihood of that, of those duplexes happening is, you know, pretty nil. But, you know, on the books, we still would be allowing duplexes in, in those districts. If this doesn't pass, then, you know, we still have duplexes, you know, by special permit in the residential C district.
Okay, no, just asking because I see, I noted in here as well, the character of the neighborhood. It seems to be a constant theme, whether it's at master plan public forums or just being here, that there's a lot of people are always talking about the character of their neighborhoods. And wanting to preserve that and having a strong loyalty to that, and it almost feels, when I hear that, that kind of feedback, it makes me wonder, what is it about duplexes that makes them feel like it doesn't help to provide consistency in their neighborhoods? And we don't actually even have that backbone in place to help that or establish that. So maybe there's that, there's that sense out there that, you know, duplexes, what, what are the guidelines there? Are they much larger? Is there, what's the max height? What's, what is, you know, is it the next largest house only 1,200 square feet? How do we help the residents maintain that character of their neighborhoods without having that infrastructure, I guess, in place? And maybe it's a separate question, but it just, I can't help to notice that theme always come out.
And I, I do think it's a, it's a separate question, Carrie, but,
Yeah.
but it's something that, that this board should address in the, in the near future. If we're gonna continue to allow duplexes, and, and if the, the way the zoning reads today isn't satisfactory to everybody, but you still wanna continue with duplexes, you know, then maybe you look at, you look at sizes. You, you look at limiting the size of them. I mean, you know, it, it's, it's not gonna be popular with some people, but, but, but that, some communities do do that. You know, that it can only be at 9 square feet, or, you know, similar to what we do with accessory dwelling units. We have, we allow those in our zoning bylaw, but there's a cap on how big those can be. So, you know, that's something that the board can consider. But again, you know, it can't be done in a vacuum. You have, you gotta look at the reality of, of what the size lot is, then, you know, again, you look at the massing, the scaling, you know, that, and, and that, you know, can all be looked at.
Okay, thank you. Amy, anything else?
No, but I'm just thinking back to Judy Barrett, you know, we met with her, and her first memo said, you know, there, she kinda talked like there's no right or wrong. You could have two-family conversions. You could have duplexes. You could have them in RA. You could have them in RB. Like, she didn't say there was a right or wrong. She said it's what do the townspeople want? So I think that's where I'm leaning. It's what do the townspeople want? I don't know what they want, but I guess, you know, depends on who goes to town meeting.
Well, part of, does this upcoming, the, the master plan online survey includes housing choices?
Yes, there, there's housing questions. I didn't bring, I should've brought you all the, well, no, because then you would've done it during the meeting at the QR code.
You have too much other stuff to do.
But, um, the, um, the, there's 21 questions on the master plan survey. So it's a lengthy survey this time, very detailed. Did you take it yet, Amy?
I looked through it. I did look through it.
I, I'll take it.
Henry, you took it? I, I took it, but.
10, 15 minutes to go through. You gotta read the questions.
Yeah.
It says, pick three out of the list, pick four, pick five. That's the top five.
You know, you're, you're rating what's, what is important to you out of that, you know, it'll state the goal, then it states the recommendations, and we want you to rate those recommendations. Not if there's 10 recommendations, we don't want you to rate them 1 through 10. We say, you know, pick your top three or pick your top four. So there, again, there's housing questions, you know, related to the housing goal.
Okay.
I feel like with the housing questions, it doesn't really ask, you know, duplex, multifamily. Do you want higher density in the downtown to help with walkability? Like, I felt they were, they weren't specific on what type of housing are you looking for.
No, but that's where you go into when you start your implementation. So that's why I say wait till.
Michelle? Having heard everyone else.
So I, just to recap, I, I actually agree with Amy. I was just noting here, there are actually six or seven citizen's petitions coming before town meeting this year.
Um, there's, I haven't counted them. There's two, there's two related to trash.
And then we have a board of selectmen in the office, did you, in the audience. Did you guys discuss and vote on yours that?
Um, we don't make a recommendation on the citizen's petition. I guess depending on the substance, I don't believe you make a recommendation on the citizen's petition.
Okay.
You have to by law.
You have to by law?
The planning board does.
Oh, the planning board.
Not the board of selectmen. The planning board has to.
Yeah.
That's why you're holding a public hearing.
Okay.
Because it's not, you know, it's not your article, but you have to hold a public hearing.
On it.
And then you have to make a recommendation to town meeting.
All right. So I agree with what the board members have said, that I would love to hear what the, the public has to say. We've been talking about this for almost three years now. And we have talked about this a lot. And we've gone over data. We've looked at maps. We've tried to figure out where it should be and where it shouldn't be. I'll be perfectly honest. I think what really spurred this is that we added in the waiver at the last year's meeting, and I think that just added a lot of contention, and I think this is maybe where it's coming from. The elimination of the, the waiver to reduce the minimum lot frontage. You know, I think in reflection, maybe we shouldn't have done that at the last minute. Maybe we wouldn't be discussing this today, but I think that's where a lot of this is coming from. Having said that, I understand what our building inspector is saying about new housing. I work with it every day. I understand how people would prefer to see things like the redevelopment of Hudson Street, you know, the remodeling of it versus a tier-down. I also understand some of these buildings, you simply can't even build on them. You have to tear them down. So, and I understand what Kathy's saying. It's a difficult thing to do when, I know I've been on the planning for many, many years. And when you come with a citizen's petition, you almost, next year will be going back and cleaning up what happened, what you put forward on the first citizen's petition. So I'm glad it's going to town meeting. I would love for people to come out and discuss it. Am I in favor of it or against it? I'm just sort of sitting here going, what is there more to talk about? Right? So I almost feel like I wanna just, you know, I wanna abstain from the vote because, and you can't.
You can't abstain from the vote. If you don't make a vote at town meeting, then you basically kill this.
Okay.
So, so by law, by, by Massachusetts State Statute 40A, which is a zoning enabling act.
Right.
The planning board has to hold a public hearing on any proposed zoning amendment and make a recommendation to town meeting.
Well, if I were to make a recommendation.
And then I have to give that recommendation to the attorney general.
Okay. So what I would recommend of the whole thing, because I think what really spurred this whole thing coming on is just eliminate the waiver that we put in, in April of last, in May of last year before the town meeting. If we don't wanna do that, you know, that's, that would be what I would see would help make a little bit of the resolution of the problem that people are thinking about. But other than that, that's all I have for feedback. We've discussed it a lot. I don't know how the board feels about that.
So, um.
Whether they wanna vote in favor of it.
Well, you, I mean, it's a public hearing, so you, you have to open it up first.
Right, so.
And then make your, your vote.
We're not, we're not there yet.
Okay.
So I noticed, though, that Article 40 has all of, it has parts one, two, and three.
Yes.
So there's multiple amendments in part in Article 40?
Yeah, it was written as one article.
Yes, so does that mean it's all up or all down?
No, through the public hearing process, the, the planning board can propose amendments. You know, it would be a motion on the floor. The, you know, based on, you know, your input from your public hearing. So you could, you could, you know, make a, an amended motion on the floor at town meeting.
Which is how we got the waiver put in last year, by a motion on the floor.
You, no, no, what happens with that is you had, it was your article.
Yep.
So you, through your public hearing process, you amended your article. And because you did that, your public hearing process, the motion that was read on the floor included what you did at the public hearing.
Okay.
Given that this isn't your article, it's not your initial motion to make. So the petitioner would, unless, unless you, I mean, you, you don't have the opportunity because the petitioner's not here or anyone else. But, you know, you could, you know, talk with the petitioner and ask them if they would, you know, be willing to consider an amended article based on the public hearing. And then that's the article, that's the motion that would be read at town meeting if the petitioner agreed to it. Otherwise, without the petitioner here tonight, I think, you know, I'm not the, you know, authority on, on, you know, town meeting protocol, but, I mean, based on my years of experience with zoning, what you would be doing, if you wanted to make an amendment to this tonight, you know, you would be presenting an, your amendment at, on town meeting floor.
Okay. All right, so my take on the zoning amendments that have been proposed, I'm not sure whether they're a good idea or not. But what I do know is that we've been in master plan subcommittee meetings for almost a year now, and taking the input of the town for that period of time. And it would seem to me that it's, we might just be snatching defeat from the jaws of victory if we amend zoning before master plan is done. Because through the master plan, you're gonna have a consensus from the town who will stand behind this. And not only that, but the planning board at that point can look to the master plan results and say, well, we've done this through the master plan, and we have the consensus of the town, and in accordance with the master plan, this is what should be done. And then you have the weight of the town behind you that way. While I appreciate the efforts of this petition, I think unfortunately, it's just a tiny bit premature because of where we're at with the master plan. So that's my take on this at this point, and I don't really have any other comment on it besides that. So why don't we open it up to the public and ask if anyone who's attended tonight's meeting has anything to say about this? Yes?
One question.
Name and address.
Anderson, 72 Crestwood Drive. I have one comment. I think the fear of some people is that they have a single-family house and then two condos go up on the side of them, and their view is now of buildings. If I, if I read this right, condos could be 35 feet tall. Am I reading that right?
Um, whatever's on the book, I don't have it for me.
It's, it's 35.
All right.
I kinda had a view of single-family houses. Now all of a sudden, they're looking at buildings instead. I think that's the fear of a lot of people having condos. Having one in my neighborhood. I don't live next to it. My daughter does, and sometimes you look out the window and somebody's looking from the second floor down at you. So it's, you know, it doesn't bother them, but I think that's a lot of fear, especially when you get into smaller lots. The other thing is, I think Bob said something about disadvantage or something. I think if anything was disadvantaged, is housing for seniors. That's the biggest need in the state, okay? And that would be housing that seniors would afford to live in on, in, in their later years. Whether it's apartments or something like that. That's, to me, is the, I forget the word Bob used.
Economic disadvantage?
Yeah, right. That's where we really have a need in, in the state, in the country, really. That's all I can say.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Yes, go ahead.
Jason Bro, 27 Tree Top Circle. I'm a member of Laura Sleitman and also a member of the Master Plan Steering Committee, but I'm not speaking in that capacity tonight. Speaking only as a private citizen. First, I did wanna ask that question. Is the subject of this citizen's petition the same bylaw that was before you by a petitioner seeking waiver for a frontage requirement for development?
Uh, one portion of it is.
Yeah.
Yeah, the.
In recent past meetings, say over the last three or four months.
Yes, so the very last portion of this would seek to delete that waiver.
I guess the concern I have, I've never been much of a fan of zoning bylaw changes being enacted through citizen's petitions. Massachusetts general laws empowers municipality to have a planning board. Each of you seeks to exercise that authority by being elected to the planning board. And in my opinion, I think it's incumbent upon you all to defend the authority of the planning board. Certainly, an issue like this could come up. It may have some merit. From the discussions here among you, I don't sense a lot of, you know, necessarily agreement or unanimous agreement. In my opinion, for a citizen petition that comes on the floor of town meeting, if the planning board's required to make a recommendation, it should be a unanimous or near-unanimous statement. Not one with a split or divided board who, even among themselves, can't say what the merits of, of this, this is consistently and bring that voice to the public who are going to town meeting and expecting a reasonable and measured recommendation from the board. I think a point of the timing of this presentation relative to the progress of the master plan is relevant. There are a lot of considerations being made there for housing, for affordable housing, for various forms of housing that might address different segments of the population. And to take this step here tonight through a citizen's petition seems to me to be, as stated, premature relative to how the master plan is progressing. And that may provide some additional guidance, which in some extent would be a reflection of the broader community's desires. That's the entire point. I respectfully ask you to not recommend the citizen's petition article. I'm not even much concerned about the substance of it. I am concerned about the process of it. As much conversation, as much deliberation as you've had on the subject of duplexes these last several years, here's yet another change that's being proposed. It hasn't really been before you long enough to be discussed on its own merits. I don't find tonight's discussion to be very helpful considering the petitioner herself is not here to defend it. The letter she presented, I would say, is colored with a lot of emotion and opinion and not so much fact. I just don't see for what you have before you to be persuasive in recommending approval of that at town meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks. And you know, it strikes me that just a couple meetings ago, that the issue of this waiver and whether we wanted to put forth a zoning amendment to eliminate this waiver was before this board, and we defeated that three to two. So that's something that we gotta keep in mind.
So, yeah, so just to reiterate a little bit of what Jason said, so I, and maybe you can agree, I don't know if you agree with me. I don't think duplexes are like. I don't think duplexes are like even brought up as part of the master plan. I don't see it as like, I mean, it's an option, but it's not the whole housing. It's like, do you know what I'm saying? So I feel like it's, it's something you can, you can offer, but there's so many other alternatives about it. I mean, one of the things the board can consider, and I am disappointed that the applicant isn't here tonight because we could go back and forth and ask, do you want to change it this or that? And so we don't have that option tonight. But, and could we, maybe we could keep it open. I don't know if we can keep the vote open. But the other option is if we go to town, this is going to go to town meeting, and when it goes, if we hear what the residents say, we can come back next year as a board and then take it out ourselves, which is what you're saying is the process, versus now we're at, our resident is doing it. Is the resident doing it because they know the board is struggling with it and sees it on the TV? I don't know. But we've talked about this for so long. I still go back and think that this wouldn't be for us if we didn't have this. I mean, I know we voted on it, but the board is split on the waiver, so I feel like that is part of what's brought this forward. But I also think that the board could also listen to what the residents say at town meeting, and then next year make a vote on the, their, this board, five members, to take it out if we want to, take RC out of it. Because by then, the master plan will be done, and it'll be before the planning board. Correct, Kathy? And the, all the housing, all that will be before the planning board.
Yeah, I mean, the implementation is, you know, a, you know, like a five to seven-year process. So just because we're going to finish the master plan this summer does not necessarily guarantee that, you know, like that housing is the first thing that you're going to take up. What I'm sensing from the Master Plan Steering Committee meetings is that we're going to be working on the downtown for a couple of years before we do anything. I may be wrong, but that's what I'm sensing from the, from the master plan.
So.
So, so, but does the master plan go into the specifics of saying duplexes? No, absolutely not. But, but it never would because it's up here, you know?
To higher level.
And your zoning is down here. So you got to get up here finished before you get down here.
But I'm not sure the public has the patience to wait five to seven years on this. And so if we say that we have to wait out five to seven years on this, that's where you, and the planning board doesn't address it, that's where you're going to see the citizens' petitions come forward. If we use this master plan as a reason to wait.
Well, it, I mean, it, I understand what you're saying, but it's, it's, you know, through education, too. It's not, you know, master plan doesn't mean that you wait. I mean, a master plan is exactly that. It's a, it's a comprehensive plan that, you know, it's your blueprint for going forward. You know, so hopefully, people will understand that process and in, and in due time, you know, the, between the planning board and the zoning board and the board of, excuse me, the Board of Selectmen, you know, it will be determined, you know, what, what are the, what are the priorities of the community and what do people want to work on first? And, you know, you know, we're going to have subcommittees and, um, I mean, that's all a good thing to me. That's, that's all a very good, you know? I mean, you want people involved in the process. And, and you know, and, and you, you want it more than just the, the five of you, you know, determining what the, what the fate of the community is.
I feel the first master plan, they did ask that. They had, like, eighty questions. They said, do you like duplexes? Do you like multifamily? And back then, people didn't like it, but yet it went forward. And then since I've been on the board, that's all I hear, we've been talking about duplexes since I've been on the board for four years, but it just keeps going forward. And now in the new master plan, we're asking roundabout questions, but not really questions about duplexes or multifamily to get a real feel of what, I think when people read the survey and say, would you like to see high density? I don't know what they're thinking in their mind. Like, people can think different things. High density is duplexes, high density is apartments like Avalon, you know? I don't know if we're getting to the real answer, but I do know that people keep coming to, like, talking about it, about duplexes, and they have questions and concerns. And this is just another person with a petition. So I feel like, I feel like, you know, if I go forward and say that I didn't approve it, then I feel like I'm not listening to the people. And I, when I ran, I went door to door, and I said I would listen to the people. So I think I would vote, because I, because I was part of the Judy Barrett process, and if it comes out of RC or if it comes out of GR, she said it's not the end of the world, you know? And since the master plan could be five years out, if we find out that's what people vote on, and there's an uproar because we're not having duplexes, we can add them back in. We can add them back in next year. It's just, I just, I ran to listen to what people are saying, and so I want to listen to what people are saying. And I don't think by saying, okay, we approve that she can go forward with the citizen's petition, I don't think it's going to be the be all and all.
We, we're not saying you can't go forward with the citizen's petition.
Oh, right, right. But I say if I go and I say that I don't agree with it, and then it goes to town meeting, and they'll say, oh, well, she, you know, didn't agree. I don't, I just, I'm ready to vote on it, I guess.
You, you know that you can take a position as a planning board member.
Right.
Based upon procedure and, you know, as, based upon what we do here as a planning board, you can take the position that, one position, but then as a citizen that lives out there.
Right.
In the town. If you don't, if you personally don't feel that way, that's entirely your right.
But I feel like as a planning board member, we've beaten, we've beat this to death.
We definitely have.
And if residents are still coming back to us saying they don't want them, then I want to give them that chance.
It's, okay, we've only had one application in, in the whole year that it's been in effect. We've had one application come before us, and that's it, so. Anything else?
Nope.
Nope. Anything else on this end?
No.
Nope. No, anything else from the town? Okay. Anything else from the members of the public? Yes?
I'll just repeat that I think at least as important as the substance of the petition is the process of the issue. And the proper process is for this to come into handover time. If you were unable in recent prior meetings to agree on what the change should be and reenact yourself, I find it difficult to see what his changes then that would lead you to give a positive recommendation of this.
Especially since we haven't had a meeting since then. Point taken. Okay, so what is the board's pleasure in terms of voting on this? Do we want? Well, we can't break it up into voting on part one, part two, and part three, right? We have to vote it as a whole.
Right.
But make any motions to amend.
Yeah, it's, yeah, exactly.
That's what I want to do. So Anthony or Carrie, do either of you desire any amendments to the petition as it's written?
No.
Michelle or Amy?
No.
I would just make the recommendation of keeping everything, keeping everything as we have, but eliminating the waiver.
So your recommendation would be to modify.
Right.
The warrant article to eliminate part one, part two, and part three, except.
The waiver.
Delete existing footnote.
And that's where I wish the applicant was here tonight, if we could have this discussion. Was this what drove her to have, you know, all of these changes in here? We can't ask that question, she's not here, so I'm just making that suggestion.
Can I ask a process question?
Yeah.
About town meeting, whoever it's for? If, if for some reason we, you know, we hear the discussion at town meeting and it sounds like residents are feeling a different way than we thought, can we make our amendment, can we make an amendment on the floor that night? If we, like, for example, if we took Michelle, what you're saying now, could we just say, could we make that amendment there if we find that residents aren't?
You would do that as a citizen, not as a planning board member.
As a citizen, yeah. So that's, is that something that's possible, you can do?
Yeah, yeah. It's possible to make any, for anyone to make any kind of amendment on the floor.
Yep.
I would just, if anyone has been at town meeting, when someone has tried to amend something that, you know, has not worked its way through the boards, it's pretty much a disaster show. Um, you know, people are handwriting on, you know, scrap pieces of paper that they're grabbing from people, and, you know, and trying to get a motion, you know, done on the fly. It's just, it's just, does town meeting in New England allow that? Yes. I would just, you know, it, I, I would just, you know, caution against you as a board doing that. It's, you know, there's, I mean, there's a, there's a venue or an avenue right now for you to do that if you, if you so choose. You know, Michelle, I don't know what you, if what you just said was, I know it wasn't a motion, but is that, is that a suggestion that you want to?
Well, Teresa just asked, would the, the board make any changes or amendments to this article? Recommendations to the petitioner? And that was my only recommendation.
Right. So before we put, transform that into a motion, I just want to sort of poll the audience, and then if Michelle still wants to make it, we can.
Got you.
So Anthony, would you be in favor of or against amending the warrant article to eliminate everything except the deletion of footnote one? So that's really, would be ultimately the only issue presented.
I think I'd be in favor in keeping the petition as is.
As is. Carrie?
Same.
As is.
Yeah, I think so, too. But is there any way to leave the hearing open and reach out to her and see if she can come any day next week to ask her or?
Next week's school vacation.
So you're not going to be here.
I'm not, I'm off, I'm out of town at a conference all next week. But again, that's just, that's my schedule, but just so that you know that. I'll be back in the office on Thursday afternoon.
Yeah, I wish she had sent a proxy. I mean, she could have sent anybody. I, because she didn't, I'm sure it wasn't put together in a vacuum, just, just her.
Right, because I'd like to ask her, but.
Yeah.
I mean, if, if we can't ask her, then I'd just leave it as it is because we don't know, you know? I don't know.
So with.
What she wants to do.
Okay, because I wouldn't vote.
Right, if this is what you want to do, I'm sorry, Teresa.
No, that's okay. I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to amend this in any format either. So I think just having three saying that we wouldn't want to amend it, I think would eliminate you from having to ask the question. Although I think it's a good idea. I mean, it's a good try, yeah. So that being the case, is there a motion to approve? Is this Article forty?
Yes.
Article forty, pardon. So we just make the motion, have it seconded, and then if there's a discussion, we'll have a discussion on it?
I'll make a motion for those who approve Article.
Just make a, just a motion to approve it.
Motion to approve Article forty.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
You'll have to figure out, Kathy, who you want to pick for that second. Okay, is there any further discussion on Article forty in terms of what you each individually would like to do as a planning board member? Questions, concerns from anybody? Okay, all those in favor of approving?
So, so actually, you're recommending to approve?
I'm sorry, recommending to approve Article forty. All those in favor? Aye. Say aye. One, two, three. All to oppose? Two. Okay.
Okay, then you need to close the hearing.
Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
I make a motion to close a public hearing.
Is there a second? Okay, all those in favor? Okay. So now, moving on, we have, sorry, we're an hour late. Site plan approval for land clearing or grading at two twenty-two S Main Street. Applicant is Aview Construction, the engineer is Cornerstone Engineering. Sure thing. Okay, cool. Thank you.
So what, well, Mr. Sullivan is setting up. What you have in front of you, and actually, I don't know if we gave you copies tonight of Fred's review letter?
Yes.
No, I know I gave them to you. Here, here you go. There you go, there's a bunch. So Fred had, Fred put together his review letter. This is a site plan approval, it's not a public hearing, this is a public meeting, but the butters were notified as we always do with the site plan. And then, so obviously, the applicant will make their, their presentation, and Fred can review his letter afterwards.
Go ahead and add.
Thank you, Attorney General. For the record, I'm Mike Sullivan from Cornerstone Engineering, representing Tony Aview, who's also here. He's the owner of the applicant. You're all certainly familiar with the site, so we don't have to belabor that, but just in terms of orientation, Lincoln Street is here and Route twenty is here. In terms of existing conditions, I don't know if, from the distance, you can make it out, but the black and blue dash line that you see here is the existing pavement, barn, and house. The current vegetation on the site is predominantly lawn and fields. So in terms of the bylaws for clearing and grading, you will see after the presentation that there's very little clearing that will be needed only because of the existing conditions that are there. The proposal is to construct three single-family houses with two-car garages, all drivers we dumped onto Lincoln Street. The houses will be forty to fifty feet off the front property line for these two, and approximately eighty feet off of Lincoln Street with the one that's on the corner of Route twenty and Lincoln Street. The topography currently runs from the rear of the properties to the front. The grading in the front of the houses, there'll be an increase of approximately two feet. So we're only picking the grade up a couple of feet in the front, and as I said, it slopes towards the street, so there'd be a cut in the rear of the house. We're proposing approximately fifty feet for a backyard, so it's not excessive in terms of the grading. The utilities will be provided to the site from Lincoln Street. The trees that you see in green are going to be saved, and the two that you see in red will be taken down. The size of those trees, just so you have that. This is a twelve-inch maple. This is a twenty-two-inch oak, a twenty-inch pine, and this is a thirty-six-inch maple here. These are two fourteen-inch spruce trees will be coming down. This one, I'm no avarice, but this looks pretty sad. I was up here the other day, and this, this tree looks pretty sad. So whether it's going to die or not, I don't know, but we're proposing to take it down very close to the house and in the backyard area. The total disturbance, the bylaw states anything over twenty thousand square feet, you have to come in for this approval. Individually, we're under the twenty thousand. In aggregate, we're forty-eight thousand for the three lots, so above sixteen thousand square feet per lot is the disturbance. In terms of impervious, because of the existing pavement, barn, and house on Lot four, which is this lot here, there's a reduction of about almost thirteen hundred square feet of impervious by taking out what's there and constructing what's being proposed. On Lot five, there's about five hundred square feet less than what's currently there. Obviously, on Lot three, there's no impervious, so that's a hundred percent of what Mr. Aview is building will be an increase. As I said, the trees, the four will save, these two will go on. Under the bylaw, there's six criteria that needs to be evaluated and make sure they are properly addressed before this board. The first one is minimize site alteration and land clearing. I think we've accomplished that by, again, the backyards are about fifty feet, and these two houses in particular are fairly close to the, the front of the lot, so I, I don't think it's excessive in terms of that regard. The mature trees that are going to be impacted are these two fourteen-inch. The major trees that are on these lots will be preserved. The second criteria is protect wildlife habitat. There's no rare endangered species or habitat in this area that falls on the maps or plans that would be required to protect, so I'm not sure that is even applicable here. Protect understory vegetation, again, lawn, fields, there really isn't a lot to deal with. These trees, to assure that we are going to protect them, will be fenced so that during construction, everybody's well aware that, that is the intent. Exclusive of this regulation during this planning process, Mr. Aview has been fanatical about saving these trees. So it's something from the builder's perspective that it's a good thing as well. So it's something from the builder's perspective that it's a good thing as well. So I don't think you have to worry about those trees coming down. Proper site management, pretty much the same thing. The only thing you really need to do to preserve those trees would be the fencing. That is being proposed. Protect the site during construction. Erosion control, we're encapsulating the entire site with both, both wattles and silt fence so that you don't get any impacts on Lincoln Street. Any stockpiling will have hay bills at the toe of the slope so that if there is any erosion, it will be caught before leaving the pile. If it's long-term, it'll be hydro seeded so it'll prevent any erosion on the, the stockpiling. The runoff, under the bylaw, these blue ovals that you see in the front, it's required that any impervious be directed to those so that it can be infiltrated into the ground, and that's the function of those, so that there wouldn't be any spillage onto the road. Additionally, and Fred had included in his letter, there'll be a stone apron on the access to Lincoln Street so that when the trucks are leaving, coming and leaving, that you're not getting a lot of silt on the road. And if it does get some silt on the road, then Mr. Aview would take care of that through a sweeping method. And then the final, number six is re-vegetate the site immediately after grading. Obviously, these are, these are spec houses. Mr. Aview wants this cleaned up as quickly as possible, look presentable, so for that reason, in addition to what the bylaw states, that will be, after the finished grading is done, it will be properly seeded and vegetated. So those are the standards that fall under the, the land clearing and grading bylaw. I have read Fred's letter. I'll wait till he goes through it. I, I just, there's just one comment I'd like to make on one of the items. The other one's.
Okay. I was going to ask Mr. Litchfield to go through his letter, so don't go anywhere.
Okay. I reviewed the plan, and I would have to agree with Mike that the, the plan does grade the site appropriately. I wanted to point out to the board that, as Mike indicated, each of the lots disturbs about sixteen thousand square feet, and prior conversations with Mr. Aview indicated that should he decide to develop one lot at a time, he would not be before you tonight. So I wanted to make sure that's clear, since we've had a couple of hearings, but mostly post files. So the way he's laid it out, and he's not sure about the sale, so he wanted to cover his bases by clearing the land and building all three houses at once in a quicker fashion rather than dragging out the three individual ones, which seems appropriate. The plan indicates there's a sewer easement, and I would recommend that you require a recorded copy to be submitted to the town prior to the, the lots being sold, therefore, new owner couldn't lock the recording of that easement. That just gives the town the ability to work on that sewer line that runs between two lots. The roadway opening permits would be required for each lot, and as far as I know, none have been filed for yet. The sewer connections require a clay barrier prior to the entrance into the town. It's part of the new code that the DPW is working on. I'm not sure everyone's aware of that. The tracking pad that Mike referred to, stone pad, is important. Also, I would recommend that they limit the construction access to one point of entry onto Lincoln Street, and then that would stay in effect until the driveways for each of the lots were actually ready to be paved so that we don't have people going into each house through a muddy section of Lincoln Street at that point. It's rather busy at that, near that intersection, so try to minimize it as far away impact by having the construction entrance far from West Main Street and keep that tracking pad fresh throughout until you're ready to pave. The erosion control barriers are shown around the limit of the, of the lot on Lincoln and West Main, but in the event that one house is sold and, and finished prior to the lot next door, those erosion controls should be extended to isolate each lot, one lot that's undisturbed from a lot that is disturbed or vegetated and not, and stabilized and the other one that's not. The grading behind lots three and four shows it rather steep in a small area, which the plan indicates that that whole area would be grass. Two-to-one slope is very difficult to, to mow, I would expect, so my recommendation is that they spread that out a little bit so that that could be planted and then mowed by the future homeowner. Or put in a small wall, it's only a couple of feet in difference, and that would also accomplish the goal if they're trying to maximize the flat area behind the house. It's, it just might eliminate some frustration for the future homeowner. Then, he's already indicated that the lot will be re-vegetated as soon as the grading is done, which is preferred. The owner shall also follow the items listed in Section one through five of this, of the chapter regarding monitoring and inspection as outlined in the zoning bylaw. They're, they're mostly construction procedures. I did list them all except for the last one that includes the as-built plan, which is, I think, very important and should be included in any approval more prominently than just being referenced in the bylaw. That's all I have.
Okay, I did have one question based on what you've said. With respect to your item number six, and then your recommendation that they only use one entrance and exit on item number five, are you limiting the manner in which the land clearing can occur if you're requiring that the lots be barriered, but you're requiring only one driveway be used?
What I, and maybe it's not clear in the letter, is that the, the tracking pad should be installed where the construction entrance is. There obviously has to be three driveways, one for each house. The tracking pad is for the construction entrance so that while they're clearing, they don't go in and build three driveways right away and then leave them in a muddy situation throughout the spring. What I'm looking for is a, a pad, construction entrance, create a staging area on the property and not cut the driveways in until they're ready to utilize them, and then hopefully pave them in a short timeframe after.
Okay.
And then as far as the erosion control barriers, it's really, if one lot is ready to be sold and the grass is growing, then the lot next door, which is not stabilized, should have the erosion control barriers run up along the property lines to isolate the mud from flowing onto the newly planted grass.
Got it, okay.
And the street.
Just, just two comments, no, no problems with the majority of the letter at all. Two comments. What Fred was referring to, just so the board can understand, that two-to-one slope is here. We started it at this point because we're trying to get at least fifty feet for a backyard, which is not a big backyard, but that's what we're proposing, but also to preserve these trees. We don't want to go further back and, and have to take those trees down. What I would suggest to the board and, and to Fred is, these are going to be spec houses. There may be a personal preference for the people buying it. Do they want a lawn, which you'd, you'd reduce it? Do they want myrtle? Do they want a bark mulch? You know, there's multiple, or a wall. I mean, there's multiple options that could be utilized. Would hate to be pigeonholed to something specific. So I would suggest that if we could work with Fred prior to getting a certificate of occupancy from Bob, that it, it's agreeable to him with the cover and the slope, rather than making that decision tonight. That would be our preference.
In reviewing the plan, what I envisioned from the way it was drawn was that those lines being rather close together are, are sloped fairly two-to-one. But they're also not saying that they're anything other than grass. So they're limited as lumen. See, what I'm suggesting is that two-to-one's hard to mow, and that if you hold the upper line.
I do it all the time, Fred. I don't know.
No, I don't believe that. I don't, I think I've seen the goats at your house. I think you could spread those lines out closer to the house and still have the lawn area that your clients or your potential home buyers might be looking for. I'm perfectly amenable to work with it. It's not a, it's not a specific requirement in the bylaw. It's just a suggestion. I've got some steep horts in my yard, and they're tricky, so maybe not as agile.
You're much older than I am.
He's offering to withhold a CO until you say okay.
Which is a dangerous thing to do.
It is.
Just the age you has come.
Offers out.
Bob will issue a sentence.
And the only other thing, just for clarification, on number eight, I presume that means finish, once we have the finished grading done?
Yes.
Oh, yes. That's all I have.
Okay.
I just want to qualify that with one statement.
Should the project run into next fall and it's not finished greater, then you would put some temporary stabilization for the winter.
No problem.
Okay. Anthony, any questions?
Just quickly, on, on West Main Street, is, does the street go straight up to the property, or is there something in between?
The, the right-of-way goes right up to the property. This is property line here.
Is that, is that grass today, or is that sidewalk?
It's a slope, some juniper zone up in this area here. And there's a driveway that comes in here now for the existing house.
Right, yeah, okay.
Just point out the edge of the pavement.
The edge of the pavement is out here. So there's a considerable distance from the edge of pavement to Mr. Aview's property.
Okay. And I just, I imagine hours of operation, all that would be regulated to whatever.
They're actually regulated as responsible.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, no, I, I'm fine with this.
Great, thanks, Anthony. Carrie?
No questions. This is a very thorough application.
Amy?
No, no questions.
I'm fine with it.
Anybody here in the public that has anything to say, yes, Mr. Scholes?
Just a question. My name is Henry Scholes, and he's somebody from Prescott. Are you going to do any blasting there?
There's no reason for us to believe this lives here. We've done test holes out there. We shouldn't be doing it.
All right, okay.
Anyone else in the audience?
I don't want to be blasted, though.
Oh, you'll know.
Okay, anything else?
I just wanted to, I forgot which planning board, not that it matters, but one of you asked me at the last meeting if the applicant had been through the process with the Historic District Commission, and the answer is yes. And a demo permit was issued actually in December.
I had one question, too. On the application, it says that there'll have to be a modification to the A and R. Was that done?
It's not required. The A and R created those three lots as you see them.
Okay, it just says proposed construction along West Main Street. The three lots will require modification to the previous A and R plan endorsed in two thousand and seventeen.
Actually, I think that was. I think, yeah, that you, someone came in and signed the A and R.
Well, that was a comment when there was a common drive. There was a difference, I believe, between the lots that were presented in the common drive plan than were presented in the Form A prior to that.
Anything else? Okay, so I think at this point, we can entertain a motion if somebody would like to make one.
I'll make a motion to approve the site plan approval application for 222 West Main Street as presented tonight.
Second.
Including Fred's.
Including Fred's letter.
And could you also include the requirement that the preserved trees shall be fenced off prior to land clearing? And include that in number five of Fred's letter that we're going to require they use one entrance exit during the land clearing operations? And that the applicant will follow up with Fred's office to obtain final approval before the certificate of occupancy issues with respect to the slope in the back?
On number seven.
Yep.
Okay, anything else on that? Okay, and was that motion seconded? No.
Anthony did.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Great, thank you.
There you go, thank you. Good luck.
Okay, we did the minutes. We've dealt with town meeting. There's no A and R, there's lot releases, bonds. So the last thing we have to do is schedule some meetings.
Meeting scheduled. So what I would pose, yeah, just to start the conversation. The next meeting is scheduled, again, I'm away, I'm, I'm away next week. We're, we're off anyways. This is your, this is the second Tuesday. So third Tuesday, which is next Tuesday, I'm away, out of town for a conference, and then that, that brings us to town meeting. So your next meeting, I have gone ahead, I haven't scheduled a public hearing yet, although I need to do that tomorrow, assuming everyone's okay with May seventh as your next meeting. So you're going to have a public hearing on site plan approval for 109 West Main Street, which you all have in front of you tonight. So I'm giving you the application tonight. And Michelle will, actually, I think we've already, we already went through design review.
Yes, we already, yeah.
He came early this time.
Yep.
So, so that's the only thing that I have right now for your, as far as a hearing for your May seventh meeting. And then we can put the, if you want, the board reappointment policy, you know, instead of doing that tonight. And then as far as other meeting dates, I was looking at, kind of sticking with the first of each month, June fourth, July second, which I know it's always gets tricky around the fourth, so whether that's an issue with people, so, or you could go to July sixteenth, and then August sixth. Does that work for people?
Could I just have a quick question? When will the master plan be done?
I, well, we're anticipating, I mean, it really depends on the, the conclusion of the steering committee, but we're anticipating, you know, the end of the summer, beginning of the fall.
Okay, all right. So the planning board would not have it to discuss it over the summer?
No.
Okay.
I don't know that you would want that because you have so many people vacationing over the summer. You might not get the participation at those meetings that you want.
Okay, anybody have any problems or conflicts with the four dates proposed?
July sixteenth?
Either July second or July sixteenth.
I think sixteen is better for me.
Yeah, sixteenth is better.
Sixteenth is better for me, too.
Okay.
Any other dates? Any conflict on the same rather?
Can you give me the one in June as well?
June fourth.
Okay, that's.
And then August sixth.
Okay.
And your next one will be May seventh. I'll send around an email tomorrow for you all, if that all works. And then for your June meeting, I sent out, if anyone had a chance to look at the email today, we received, or my office received, a letter from some residents who live on Newton Street. Newton Street roadway improvements that, that never go away. Carrie and Anthony haven't had the pleasure yet. But, so the residents are, you know, checking in and asking when that road is going to get finished. So as staff, we need to sit down and really take a look at this and probably make a determination or, or a recommendation to the board at your June meeting. And the reason why it will happen at your June meeting is Fred's going to be away for a couple of weeks. Scott, me, you know, it just gets to be that time of year where it, it, we just need to, you know, really concentrate to mesh schedules. So it looks like it would be June, because you're definitely not here, May seventh. So the, it's premature to say this, but it looks like we will probably be recommending to the board that we call the bond that we have in place because there really has not been any progress for about a year. But when you do what, if, if the board decides, if, if that's our final recommendation and then the board decides to do that, there, there's a process that, you know, we have to notify the applicant, obviously, who holds the bond and, you know, give him a, you know, there's a specific amount of time. It's probably outlined in, in our agreement, you know, for him to finish it, and then if he doesn't, then the town, you know, enacts on what's called. calling on, so. And then that, what happens is the town then goes out to bid to finish the road. That's it.
I just have one question.
That's where I'm at, as far as to-do list.
Would anybody be against having, like, June eleventh or June eighteenth versus June fourth? Graduation is June third.
What's, Kathy, what's your availability?
Yeah, that's what I'm just.
I know, you said you had, one of those two weeks you might be away.
Yeah, I, the, I will, I'm not sure right now whether it's the week of the tenth or the seventeenth, so whatever you guys pick, I'll work around that.
June eleventh would be the date that the groundwater committee would need if they need to, so I try to reserve the second Tuesday for groundwater.
Okay, so maybe the eighteenth is better anyway?
It gets closer if we have to need it or not, but.
So you want to look at meeting on June eighteenth instead of June fourth?
That's, anybody have any complaints with that?
That's fine with me.
No? Okay.
That works, June?
June eighteen.
June eighteen, okay.
Okay.
Let's wrap. Before we close, I want to just pass out one thing. I went to, there was a meeting last Thursday with the Board of Selectmen, so I just wanted to pass out, this is the fire station, it's gonna be proposed at town meeting, and I just thought it was good information as a planning board to have, too. It was a really interesting meeting, and they actually taped the meeting, so there's probably a video online, if anyone's interested in watching it.
Yes.
But the first part of the fire station is gonna be on town meeting floor, and then the second part of the fire station will be the year after, and it will be when they're doing the design. And municipal buildings do have to come in front of the site plan and design review, so. I was actually just thinking, they've had the fire station feasibility committee, my suggestion would be that there should be someone from the planning board or design review on the fire station building committee, just so it doesn't get so far out with the plans, and then go in front of the planning board or design review and say, oh, you guys are way off on what we were thinking. Because as part of the master plan, we're talking about the downtown revitalization, and a lot of stuff in the design review talks about traditional in New England, and this first design is a little bit modern, but it is just the first design. They said July is really, we're gonna, when they're gonna start talking about design. But my suggestion would be having someone from our board or design review on that committee, just so you could have some input, because the people on the committee right now is, it's Kim Foster, John Cudier, a resident, and some firemen, but there's nobody on it that's on the master plan, planning board, design review, and it's gonna have to come before us, so I would hate for the designs to, you know, every design revision costs money. So I think there should be someone from our board on it from the beginning, just to give input.
Amy, are you aware, has anybody from design review had any, like, access or visibility to this, or input to this design?
There is no design. There's just no design of the fire station. It's, the designer is going to be selected through the town meeting, that's why you're voting money, to buy the lot, and to hire a designer to come up with the preliminary, there's a-
The exterior?
The, I mean, there's a, again, there's a term for it, but, so that's, you know, that's, that's all to come.
The process that's transpired so far is really the feasibility of the existing station-
Okay.
-on the site, and to determine that, I think the recommendation will be that that site's just not big enough for the facility that they need to grow in the future. So they're gonna recommend that another site be acquired-
Yeah.
-and ask for money for that acquisition, and money to do the plans. So there is no plan at this point.
So that-
So this, like, what these illustrations I see don't really mean.
It's clear, it's just an illustration.
They, so, for any building, you know, process in the town, any building committee, the first phase is always, especially if there's land acquisition, you know, if we're not using an existing facility such as renovating an existing school, is the article that goes to town meeting, which is going this year, is to, you know, again, purchase the property and then hire the designer. Then, the following year, so that, so then the designer is selected, and then that designer works with a, I guess, a building committee, I'm not sure, I haven't been involved in this fire station process, but the, so then a committee would work with, with the, you know, design consultant, and then through that, that process, the result of that process then goes to the following town meeting to say, okay, here is what we've come up with, and this is, is going to cost, you know, X amount of millions of dollars, which is what it will be. And so that's the, that's the second phase. Actually, sort of the first phase, because this is a debt exclusion, to purchase the property and hire the designer, so town meeting is the first phase, and then it'll be, the debt exclusion is on the ballot for the, for the May election. So that's, that's all part of phase one, and then at the 2020 town meeting is when the actual, the big ticket item of actually securing the money to construct it.
So, so I guess to that point, then, so would, would our design review committee ever have the opportunity for input in this, or is it-
Yeah, no, it has to go to design review.
Okay, perfect.
Yeah, it has to go through, through the site plan review process and design review. If it wasn't a residential district, it wouldn't, but it, they chose a business lot.
Okay.
I was just wondering, though, if one of us should be on the committee. I'm not saying me, anybody, but, um-
It may make more sense to have somebody from design review on the committee.
Yeah, we're design review. Or even the chair of the design review is planning and design review, so that might make sense, because they're just gonna be site planned.
Right? Anything else?
I am.
Yes.
This is not my intention of being here tonight, but I'd like to take the opportunity. I am the co-sponsor of candidates night at the planning for the town andothra on May sixth at the American Legion Post. All invitations have been sent out, and all the people that are going to attend has already sent back their approval that they will be at our meeting, and I, while we're still on air, I find it a great opportunity to get the word out. Some of our intended is for the people to get to know the candidates before they vote. A lot of people vote not knowing candidates, plus, we're trying to encourage more people in the town andothra to get out and vote, so hopefully this, this will be a tangible thing. In past years, we had some great candidates night, but they went by the wayside, so hopefully this will renew candidates night.
Thank you.
I am, it's been, I think, about ten years, hasn't it, since you had one?
Excuse me?
It's been about ten years since you had a candidates night, yeah, so I think it's a good idea.
That's fantastic. Good, excellent. And that's May sixth at the Legion, is that what you said? It's, it's May sixth?
Yes.
Tuesday, Monday, May sixth.
At six thirty.
It's a Monday night, it's a lot meeting from the selectmen's.
Okay, perfect. All right, if there's nothing else, we'll adjourn. Nothing else? We're adjourned.
Done.